All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Shula Band. Spokane Tribe Indians have lived and cared on these grounds to identify themselves as flesh of the earth, who pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and the peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. Maybe we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this place. Right, agenda changes? Hearing none, can we consider the proposed agenda adopted? Alright, and then I would entertain a motion to approve the May 2023 board minutes.
We accept the U. Minutes as presented.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. And next, we have approval of the May 2023 bills of contributions.
Movement to improve bills and contributions in the amount of $1,821,052.34.
Second?
Sure.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And now we have the financial report of the fall.
Thank you Laura, appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. So for our library operations for May 2023, our passion investment trend, so as we make close library operations, we have enough passion investments down to pay in 182 days of operating costs. One day of operating cost is $34,912 as a bill of market. So the increase in cash from April to April 51 days, that increase is primarily due to the receipt of our semi-annual lending of $16, also by reimbursement from the bond for lease-related costs and E-rates, and a first quarter margin investment adjustment that is something that's supposed to be advised to be trimmed. For our expenditure trend, May operating expenditures were $1,106,944. Of this amount, cost for $666,193. The majority of our network cable upgrade, which was a purchase that began in 2002, that invoice total, that invoice amount totaling $145,000. That, that expense went off, but a 8,000 amount, 1,200,000. So the net investment was moved to our at. But we have to report that E-rates. So our books and materials told $65,102. Security guard services were $44,633. Utilities charges were $37,233. And our interfund costs in $26,300. And on to our business office news, a fun update for this month. So our, our wage reporting portfolio has been modified and formatted, so now produced 18 and critical wage reports for branch staff. So every day there is a factor to print out wage. The CSM or person in charge has to review those and then sign them off. To be good. Part of our revenue. I've had a nice opening question that you might have, or we just box depending on that date.
Questions kind of call? Penny, are you ready?
I sure am. Alright, I'm going to lead off this evening with an amendment that we have in progress with Spokane Arts Fund. And this amendment's being processed under the increased threshold authority. We haven't had one of these for a while. But this is to award Spokane Art Fund the remaining available public art budget of $111,255. And we also are going to extend that performance period into mid 2024. I'm glad we had this amendment because I, it illustrates the process that we need to do for the remaining months of the bond. So as we prepare to close out the bond projects, we are required to commit those funds by way of purchase order or, or a contract. So we'll continue to work this process for the remainder of the year. If you look down, I brought back in this financial snapshot because I thought this serves as a good illustration. This is our remaining budgets as of May 31st. Remember that remaining budget is equal to uncommitted cash balance. At the end of May, if you follow that total column down, it, we ended with 2.3 million. And when I get that, that document, the contract back from Spokane Arts, I just learned today that she is, the director's out until June 30th, so I won't get that processed in June, so it'll be a July execution. But what will happen is if you look at that third row down, there's that 111,000. When I execute that contract and process it in our system, it takes that 111,000 out of play. It's committed. In the same way that we've committed our books and materials budget, that 200,000 will also go away, though we don't use encumbrances for books and materials. We've got Rob Bruce out there working like crazy, getting those dollars spent before the, the commitment period is ending. So if you don't get all interested in how that 2.3 million is distributed in the sites, that's really not what's important here. What's important is that we're in, the end of May, we are going to go into a bid process for the Nevada Street development. Once we have that dollar amount, I will come into these sites and I'll, I'll rearrange these budgets, taking out the dollars from the sites that don't need them, and we'll bring that into the Nevada column, execute the contract with board approval, and it takes those dollars out of remaining budget. In theory, once we know our, our Birm bid on Nevada development, we should have not very much left in our bond to have committed before we end this year. It's at that point in time, once we have that hard bid in place, we'll have a better idea of what we can do with the remaining dollars. So I, I, are there any questions for me in that, pertaining to that?
You have a ballpark of what that remainder would be?
No, I can't. I would love to do that, but you know, we learned a lesson with the COVID and long lead times and we came out of the gate fairly strong in our bond projects on our phase one. But when we got to phase two, which was Indian Trail and South Hill, those lead times got the best of us and it did impact our bids. So I'd love to guess, we have architects that have, that are cranking out some estimates, but until we actually get a competitive process completed, we won't really know, but that's going to happen fairly soon. That topic is on the agenda tonight. Charis is going to talk to you about the bid process. And that will go quickly, and I think that we'll still have plenty of time to determine what we can do with those remaining dollars. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Penny, when you're, I have another question. When you're talking about the bid process that we're going to go through, that's in addition to the 974,000 that's allocated to Nevada already? Or is part of that 974,000 or 100,000?
Yeah, just look at this as our pot is 2.3 million. And so I will come in, once I get the hard bid in, I'm going to come in and I'm going to siphon off Indian Trail reserves and South Hill that aren't going to be needed. I've got some contingency over in PMO, about 50 grand. Also have some interest that's going to come in. I've got about, when I did this, it was 39,000. Right now it's about 50, so we'll be bringing those dollars in. That's really, you know, we, we enjoyed some great periods of time with interest income. Those days are over because our cash has gone from 77 million now to 2 million. So I'm only seeing between 5 and 6,000 a month, and that's going to continue to decrease. Once we get a contractor on board and we start paying out monthly, that'll just continue to dwindle. As it should, our, our job isn't to earn interest, it's to do our projects. So anything else for me? Okay, last update tonight. You might recall that Hill, Lorraine from Hill mentioned that South Hill, we've had some delays in getting the, a part, a very important part for our, our air conditioning unit at South Hill. That resulted in our Integris having to get an extension on our temporary certificate of occupancy through August 1st, which the city did grant. The good news is the part is coming to us. It's supposed to ship to us by June 30th. That will allow for a July installation. In the meantime, even though the weather has been working in our favor right now, there were some portable units placed throughout the branch and that has worked. Not ideal, but you know, we, it was a solution that, the best one that we had in the meantime. So with that, it concludes my, my update for you this evening.
Any final questions for Penny? Alright, thank you Penny.
Thank you.
Alright, next we have the chairman's report. There is no chairman's report. And then we have the library executive director's report, which Andrew submitted. Are you going to walk us through that, Charis? Okay, alright, next one. Charis, it's all yours.
Thank you. So we signed an agreement with GSI to manage the startup Spokane program. That's a project that Mark Palm has been working on for quite a bit of time. And that will be officially launching in August. That is, we've talked about, sorry. Business ownership site and brand that we've been working with. Andrew also spent some time exploring some partnerships with the Carl Maxi Center, including initiatives to digitize local black history, improve computer access, expand collection access, and offer free legal clinics. All of that is still in the stage. We've reached an agreement with STA to provide youth bus passes at our libraries again this year. Writers License Program, which allows youth age 6 to 19 to access buses for free throughout the summer. And at our special meeting in May, Andrew mentioned to you all that we were approached by the state library with an offer to provide us some extra funding for folio development. Last week, they communicated to us that their contract work with EFCO, the company that's going to be covering a third of the cost of that position, has been completed and they've sent it to EFCO for signature. So that is making its way through. The 22nd Annual Spokane is Reading Event, it's going to be, will feature author Kim Foo's collection with two free public events scheduled for October 26th. On the DEI front, we Spokane Public Library participated in the Pride Parade. We had a booth there and conducted several programs as part of Pride Month. And we also curated reading recommendations for different age groups. In our collections, we introduced a new feature to the Libby ebook service that allows customers to view the entire digital catalog and notify library, the library titles that we don't own, providing potential additions to the collection. This is the thing that Rob Bruce has been doing. A physical card catalog for quite some time as a way to generate leads on items that are of interest. In staffing, unfortunately Katie Ricard, our Youth Services Manager, is going to be leaving, or is, is gone now. She was. Recruitment for her position is underway and we are currently reviewing lots of applications. Staff has engaged in a book discussion about what we don't talk about when we talk about fat by Aubrey Gordon, May. And May's star spotlight was awarded to Shane Spockler from Facilities Department. He was named in several different stars for the course, so it's not just one singular thing that he did, but consistently doing a really good job. And with engagement with Spokane, we've been collaborating with the city in an attempt to activate Spokane Falls Boulevard with community activity during the summer months, which would be a welcome rest of the traffic revisions. And the street. We also, Andrew also participated in the city's concrete operations tool lab exercise. And is currently seeking clarity on the city's cool air center. There's been a number of points in time where we have been at school centers around the city. We have, we are participating, but only within the confines of our normal operating hours. We have not committed to anything outside. We are willing to talk about it when the city develops a plan. And that concludes Andrew's report. Question?
Alright, and Council Leah is on her board. It doesn't look like that is online, so I'm assuming we're not going to do that. Now we have the communications report with Amanda.
Yeah. So some of our highlights for this month are, we launched our new quarterly magazine. You have a copy of it there in front of you. It's Lilac City Local. This, in contrast to the youth magazines, it's for grownups in our community, and it tells the stories of the library and the community that makes it thrive. So other magazines that you might have seen from libraries tend to be listings of events. Well, this has a few events listed in it. Mostly it's narrative stories about people who have used our library, succeeded in our library. So we think it's a really great vehicle to tell the stories of how our library is being. We also launched our summer reading app, Bean Stack, as well as published and hand-delivered the summer reading magazines, Spokane Summersault and Team Bean. And Skylar is actually going to present on that later today, so I won't dwell on that. As Charis mentioned, we announced our Spokane is Reading selection for 2023. Monsters of the 21st Century by Kim Foo. Kim is a local Seattle author, so really have a Northwest author represented again for that program in October. And then a lot of our focus this month has been on Pride and Juneteenth resources and activities. Reading lists, lateral. Every year with Pride, we get a lot of support, but we also get some naysayers. So we like to be prepared with talking points for our staff for those. But in general, this year has been very positive experience. We also participated in the Pride Parade. Photo there in your packet of that, and some of those posts have been some of the most popular for the entire year. So even though we get a few negative people, it's been really nice to be. So, and then one thing I had, I just wanted to note a couple of the earned media stories that we received this month. We had an article in Spokane Phase about the Civic Salon, which Shane is going to talk about later today. So if you can see the media background around that. The Bean Fest also got two pieces of coverage, one in Brown and one on the Inlander, which had featured a really nice photo of our social sphere. So, and that concludes my report. Any questions for me?
Well, where can we find the, the new Lilac City Local?
So Lilac City Local will be available in all of our locations for free. So customers can pick those up. And then we also have it available as a digital version that you can look through and read online. I can find that.
Any other questions for Amanda?
Thank you for the talking point. It's really nice to make sure that if we happen to say anything, we're in alignment. I appreciate that.
Alright.
How many members, sorry, how many members of the team took part in the parade?
There were 17, Mark Henry.
Something like that, yeah.
And then, I think it's supposed to be 20.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Amanda. The programming report, Jason.
Alright, another, I thought this would be a slow month, and then when I added a month ago. We still did 327 things, which is more than mine. And had almost 5,000 people come to our events again. All the numbers you're going to see on there, the value score is still, I'm still trying to calibrate. What is the minimum score that we will accept? And there's just a lot of factors, especially with youth programming, that I'm trying to make sure. On those for what they actually are worth. And not, they're, all my youth teams tend to undervalue their things on the score. They're very literal to the question. So I'm rewriting some of the, the quiz to make sure that we're incorporating all of those. Finding what is that baseline score. Really, we've been talking about the idea of storytime is the kind of bread and butter of libraries. It's a program that every library does everywhere. And whatever that score is, probably should be the minimum thing we do. So if we're going to do another program and it's not going to be as good as storytime, why not just do another short one? So that's what we're trying to get. And I think we are, everything we're doing actually provides as much or more value than storytimes. It's just we're not, we're finding a way to count it. But attendance, like we said, huge, about 50/50 adults in youth programs again this month. South Hill finally did overtake Liberty Park in the as 40% of our attendance. Central can be the most, 37% of our attendance for all events are at Central. Some highlights for the month. Kathy Bakken, who's our STEM librarian, did a Make-A-Win powered Lego car program. 142 people came to the four events they had. Andy Rumsey, a education specialist, has been working on this thing called the Lullaby Project, which is a collaboration with Spokane Symphony and Carnegie Hall, where musicians and composers come together with, with mothers of young children to compose and write lullabies for those kids. Written here. Studio. Andy plays on it. My partner Liz actually plays, plays and sings often too. And then there was a performance of those. Very moving event. It was very, and I think it's going to be something that we're going to try to build on. Each year. It started pre-COVID, kind of, this kind of dragged along. Unfortunately, with symphony rules, union rules for them, we are not allowed to have those lullabies. Streaming platform. With the cost, so we're going to work on changing that for next year too. It just seems like people should hear these. Bean Fest, I just mentioned. There's no way to know exactly how many people came to it, because it was during open hours. But a conservative guess is about 600 people showed up for that event. Say probably more. The gate count. Compared to a normal gate count on Saturday. We had tons of workshops, different events all around. Very exciting. Also had a Humanities Washington, Atomic Washington. Then Sharman Shields also hosted that, which had a lot of attention. And our Master Gardener Weekly Plant Clinics continue to be very popular with that shield. We have the, we have the citizenship. So at the beginning of May, we on the stage here. We jumped the guns. It was amazing. That's, that's it for me. Any questions?
Well, you see to me that I'm going to require this.
What'd you do with this? It's on you. Now, it is, it's part of the, the symphony's contract with performances and recordings. I don't
We're having conversations with them.
Yeah.
Get it done. He should talk.
Alright, any other questions for Jason?
I just want to tell Jason, I was recently down in Bentonville, Arkansas, where I sent him his wife. He seriously decided to move. And it actually is a very nice town, and they've got a great library there, and I got to do storytime, and it was amazing. The things, things, and a huge auditorium. It's just that, because my grandson had never been, so he'd been to the Shadle Library here in Spokane. But that's the only time he'd been to the library. He spent, I had him while his parents were moving. We spent practically every day at the library. Kids programs. You know, you can just see it all across the country, I think, that they're valuable and they're well-attended. And that's good for parents, and it's just, it was really, really a neat thing, and it just made me appreciate what we did here even more. So yay storytime.
Alright, now we're ready for the new business. The formal bid for Nevada Street Development.
Alright. My friend Stephen from Integris Architecture here. Been a while. We are going to be talking about the next steps in the Nevada development. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, we own this, we currently own this undeveloped lot on Nevada that we just can't seem to get rid of. So back in February, you all gave us the approval to investigate some design and permitting of site improvements for the space and to take it off of the real estate listings. So today, we're going to be sharing some of those design concepts that we've come up with, and we're going to be asking for your approval to move forward in the formal bid process. As a refresher, this is what it looks like right now. Do you make a line? And also as a reminder, this is kind of the idea that we're heading towards. So you remember, we were talking about kind of an interim public gardening concept that would ultimately get us to a place where we could put a larger building at once. And this is just the overhead sketch that we saw last time that the architects put together of what that phase two garden area might look like. What you see is a lot of activation down here, and then the future building footprint up there.
In, in orienting to that picture that you showed, was that from Nevada Street?
Yes. Basically, if you were standing right here at Nevada and Sitco. Alright, so this is the concept that we've come up with, with Integris. So what you see here, we were trying to take advantage of a lack of public greenhouse space. That was kind of the concept that we were going with here. So you see that we started with the 24/7 kiosk. I'm just going to stand over Shane. It's all good. And the, the parking lot right there, that was phase one, right? Was to get the street improvements and to get the kiosk in there and the parking. Next to that, you've got a couple of greenhouses so that we can do some of our educational programming, like Jason was talking about at Shadle, but expanded on a larger scale. We're also, we can get some partners. We do a lot of work with organizations. Someplace that could help us be the platform for somebody else to give back to the community, basically, is what we're going for. And also to have some space for us to do our gardening. Our seed starts right now. Jinjin Moses at Shadle uses the program room as a makeshift green, greenhouse in order to make all of her sprouts for the programming. This will give her an official spot. green greenhouse in order to make all of her sprouts for the programming, this would give her an official spot. And next to that, you've got some rows for outdoor gardening, knowing that our gardening season is very short, there's just a couple of them, but very easy to do, it's just dirt. We got an idea for a conceptual chicken coop to give people the opportunity to check out a chicken. And get a feel for what that might be like, we've been exploring a number of different paths that that might take, but we have never heard of anybody checking out a chicken before, so.
We're returning it.
You don't wanna pay the late fine, but.
Yeah, go back.
And up here is where the future building footprint is intended to be. Everywhere that's green there, we're intending to be pollinating flowers, so a local blend of flowers that will increase you know, the activity, that sort of thing. And right smack in the middle is a geodesic dome. This is a thing that when Amanda and I went to Denmark for our presentation on our children's spaces, right next to the the library in Arcos, there was this geodesic dome that they had intended as a temporary structure to figure out what this kind of activated space in a public area might look like, like green space inside of a building, basically. And their community liked it so much, they didn't want it to be temporary anymore, and so it became a perfect mixture. And so when we started talking about the temporary structures like the greenhouse, we knew that we wanted to also put some kind of classroom space in there. Initially, our idea was to just section off a part of the greenhouse and leave that open for classroom space, but then Amanda suggested this dome concept. And so we went to Integris and asked Stephen to design the first dome of his career and that's where we landed. Next slide, please. This is what the inside of the dome could potentially look like. See that there's a, there's a need for some restroom facilities in there, there's also some tables, chairs, presentation space. Our idea here is that it could function as a classroom if we need it, or it can be another greenhouse if we need it, or it can be a meeting space for the community. The important part is that it's a a space that can be activated, that can give us an opportunity to figure out what this Nevada property can really be in the future with a temporary structure that's easy to take down and and it's relatively inexpensive to put up. There's our chicken coop. This chicken is for Gary. Stephen's very excited, he's a chicken owner, he likes the chicken coop.
Do the chickens count as something in the library or things, or we can have like?
Even reduction, they call it chickens. We'll have to figure out a new class. So after, just as a reminder, after the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the installation of the other three kiosks, we got about one point three million that remains for the development of this Nevada property. After design fees and permitting, that leaves us at about one point two four two right now. That's designated for this service. And so we are asking for the board to give us approval to proceed with the formal bid process, so we wanna take these concepts, put them out on the market and see how much it costs. Our intention is to take a couple of these elements, like the dome and chicken group, add in this alternates so that we can add more features to the site if we are able to afford them, but also easily be able to flex them down if we cannot. So any questions about any of the questions?
I do have a question, climate control in the dome, climate control both in the dome and in the greenhouse. Do we? You know, we have about four months here in Spokane where heating and or air conditioning isn't really needed. I don't know enough about them, so I wonder how we.
So greenhouses would be ventilated, you know, more or less probably fan powered ventilation building. Not gonna be, it's gonna be warm, but it will, greenhouse is gonna act as a heat sink, so they depending on how we build it, they can handle some thermal change like that, we're not gonna air conditioning greenhouse. Karis did ask if we could look at making them four seasons, so providing some level of heat for them. Without heat, you can add about six to eight weeks on either end of your kind of growing season. And that with some heat, you can theoretically go year round for that. The dome is a little bit, if we treat it as a greenhouse, it's somewhat similar, again, something on air condition, but ventilated, vented, and so that'll be a a concern or something to think about in terms of programming and hours available for for that, but definitely though, they'll be very functional throughout the winter season in particular, which in Spokane, we're very cold dominated for the most part, we know we have really hot summer days, but that's this much of our, you know, it's two months, we're sort of overall a year, so that's kind of the discussion we had.
Thank you.
Would you be able to use the solar panels as a way to retain some of the heat and then and then be able to use that through year round?
We haven't looked at either photovoltaic or other type of solar for this, but that would be something we could consider as part of this, you like I mentioned, that in definitely in the wintertime, they function as a heat sink. You're gathering that up and it does get you some overnight, but they're still would require some mechanic recording without going to a very sort of through our passive greenhouse, that's a whole another kettle of fish, what we looked at with with Karis was sort of an off the shelf kit that's very affordable and can be placed affordably and without a lot of site work, concrete, et cetera, that could be pulled away later, that when the site gets developed in the future.
Okay. I guess perfect picture, what is the future hope for the site, or that is undefined at this point?
So the future hope for the site is kind of like another hive type building.
Yeah.
And we were, we still need to do a lot of community outreach, like we did around the hive, to figure out exactly what the north side would like.
Yeah.
But the idea was to kind of do another one of those non libraries that focused a lot on gathering space and the amenities in there would be determined by what this.
I don't know what the profit looks like for the hive.
Okay.
How, how was that site developed in collaboration with the community?
So the hive was really interesting, when we were doing our community outreach, we got a lot of requests for public space and we got a lot of requests for active public spaces, it was a thing that people really reacted to. And when we, when we were talking with Spokane Public Schools about utilizing that space and they needed to have a teacher training facility. And we were looking at, well, what are the other things that we can take from the community input and and push them together with the teacher training facility to make something that would be valuable, and so we put together the idea of Chris Studios as kind of a blank slate, we didn't know exactly what was gonna go into the hive until we actually opened it, and when we opened it, we intended to get it wrong the first time, we anticipated that when we slapped it full of artists, nobody would care and we would have to change it over to something else. We were wrong.
Yeah.
And so we're, the intention was to do something kind of similar on North Side where we create this sort of blank slate building and figure out what fits.
Yeah. I asked because I think that this is like a fantastic idea and I'm wondering if if there is space to put a little bit more partnership in it before any kind of building, because you do, like, you have, I think that there is a great need for outdoor classroom space. And I can envision an outdoor play space, so if you have an outdoor classroom and they want to have some kind of like nature state playground to be able to rent that space, I think about the large homeschool community that is here and how they would be able to use that. And then all of the Spokane like school and their desire to have gardens in their spaces, it's, all of that is volunteer based, but if this, if this was some kind of part of that strategic partnership that you could start your school your garden could start here at the library and there can be a more programmatic flow rather than it being kind of hodgepodge, and I don't know if if all of those things need to be in place before this necessarily, but thinking about the potential beyond before, I mean, it's all temporary and so and flexible, but.
Yeah, totally, I mean, you you get it absolutely, you're envisioning that this space is gonna be primarily a partnership.
Yeah.
We're gonna do some programming in it, but a lot of it is built on those partnerships, and as soon as we know what the form looks like, it does something to go up talk to people about and engage the temporary nature of the building so that hopefully over time it can flex and change.
Yeah.
And you know, we're not committed to this single footprint, my hope is that we'll thousands of people, with no one being weird enough from the streets.
Yeah, yeah.
Attract enough attention to start engaging with that community about, you know, what really should be on the spot, should it be a dome or should it be something else?
Yeah.
And getting those deep partnerships with the greenhouse space, I think is gonna be essential for its success.
Will you bring that part into the design of the space? Like I think about the artist, the hive was so intentional in that each space was created so that an artist could come and there was all this thought put into each of those spaces, and I think that there are the same or similar needs specific to which I cannot speak to, but for people who are growing and what that would look like, if you're talking to farmers, what does an ideal layout look like, what are the things that we wanna have, we're gonna have irrigation, what does that look like? And so I'm wondering if that's gonna be part of this process as you're looking for a bid in building these.
Gotcha, so it's not our intention to do heavy community outreach around this temporary set.
Yeah.
And with this one, we're utilizing our our internal expertise, so Jinjin, who's our gardener, who leads all of our gardening programs, she's been guiding all of our steps as to what this should include to make it as functional as possible. And that comes from her working with partnerships with different gardening communities throughout our community. So we're seeing this one as kind of a temporary step as a, and kind of a platform for doing some of that deeper engagement, knowing that we also have a really tight timeframe to turn it around in order to spend the bond.
Yeah. Do you, do you have a sense, I, I, you know, parking lots are more expensive than people anticipate and imagining that that's I have a lot of what the spend will be is concrete and stuff for that, do we have a sense of of kind of how much that's gonna kind of eat up before we get?
So like, all the boring stuff? The boring stuff is eighty percent of the budget, so it's like like we're aiming for around a million dollars total, somewhere in that neighborhood for this project and somewhere around seven fifty or eight hundred thousand is stuff that we have to do in order to do it.
Trees, concrete, paving, and so we started with that conversation around particularly where the parking lot is located, so that it's it's just something we can extend for the future building space. You, you better remember the conversation, why that was difficult to sell the property, well, you basically just look at how do we work around that? How do we basically zone the site for building and then for parking, and we're using rest of the parking area for the greenhouses and the dome, we can kind of blow, give us some room, but being temporary, it can go away when it's time for real. You move to another site, or seven.
Yes.
Is there a minimum amount of parking space that is required?
Yes, it's pretty low key for this because occupants use so long, for greenhouses are sort of unoccupied. We kind of use some educated guess about the type of programming you might be doing and the space. And also try to just balance the amount of money needed for the parking lot, we started with smaller, but if we added greenhouses, we actually got a little bit bigger to make sure that we could support the programming.
Question about temperature control inside the dome, I'm curious, so you said we can ventilate it, but I'm thinking about our hundred plus degree days, we've been getting the last few summers and actually being able to host community inside of that, what what would the temperature be inside of that dome?
Hazard a guess, that's really not.
Yeah, there you go.
Time in, in these types of facilities, whether it's a greenhouse or a dome is effectively a greenhouse.
Right.
And so it's going to be basically at this ambient temperature.
I'm just wondering what the option of having another alternative building inside of that building that could be temperature controlled, like a like one of the pods that you can temperature control a little bit easier than a large dome within side of the dome?
We are talking about at least temperature controlling, this would be a restroom component and some storage.
Okay.
So that anything like supply for materials that you might need for those, those to be temperature controlled, so you're not melting grounds or whatever else and doesn't wanna be under degrees.
Was the dome that you all visited a greenhouse?
It was, I wouldn't call it a greenhouse exactly.
There were plants growing in it, but it was mostly a meeting thing.
Well, in a, in a country that's probably more accustomed not having air conditioning in the warmer months.
Their, their climate is very similar to ours in that sense and I think the idea is just stay out of that thing when it's under degrees.
How big is the total footprint? The dome, we were looking at fifty foot by hundred, so that's about two thousand square feet, that's a good sized space.
So, yeah.
I can see a dance, dance in the dome.
Well, just the drive by draw and that that would be the only building I could think of like that, other than a couple houses in Spokane that are geodesic.
We're, we're kind of imagining a similar effect to what we got on Sprague with the hive, just kind of a a visual shock and imagining like even what if you had.
You have it mirror the same shape at the pavilion?
But it lights at Christmas time, it's like fourth of July.
The dome with all the lights going.
Valentine's Day with the little arrows. I think dome itself would be a that's, if nothing else, just the drive by alone would be really interesting.
But it's also like, we talked about security and keeping greenhouses somewhat kind of protected and this gives you great advertising that can be more exposed and visible.
And dome even maybe forget all about the chickens.
I think dramatic, I think you, people should be able to rent the, a plot rather, like, and a chicken, but the chicken seems trickier just because they require so much care as a.
One of the concepts that we were thinking of around this spot, there's a number of apartment complexes, and one of the things that we were hoping to do is draw that community into the greenhouse, is to say, check out a space in the greenhouse so that we can take for a longer term program and teach them some of these things that they physically don't have the capacity to do in their that was actually kind of where the chickens came up to. It might have someone who has an interest in chickens but doesn't have the facility to, so be be able to come across the street.
I think the chickens are gonna stay there then, so when I'm renting a chicken, I'm not taking it to my house. Okay. Yeah. Think about the chickens. An approval of the chicken? Open the bid practically. All right. Any other questions? So it looks like there's a request for a motion to approve. Salute.
Sorry.
Session? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we have the Stat Association event.
Stat Association and the library is requesting for approval to close one hour early from August eleventh for a review. for a review of the thing that will be held at the department. Maybe next year it'll be in the dome. Typically, we close at five P M. Fridays, so it's one hour early to allow staff time. The event starts at five. Festivities going on. This is the second event for the staff association. We had a Christmas event that went very well and the design is two every year. So we're shooting for summer time and then. August eleven. Five until seven.
So moved.
All right, it's going to be the second and all in favor.
I.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passed. All right.
Okay, I'm the current host specialist. I was hired here last August. I'm on the adult services team headed by the muscle strange. Um, is my stuff up there? Uh, okay, um, you know, the next slide. Little bit about my background. I have a PhD in philosophy, mostly focused on ethics. I taught mainly in ethics as well as social, political and legal philosophy. I have a certificate in philosophical counseling. I'm trained as a workshop moderator for. Angels, which is national organization that works to try to reduce affective polarization, basically hating people that you have political disagreements with. That's bad. Um, personally, I also have an interest in the health of our civic discourse as well as an interest in why people believe what they believe. Um, before I was doing this, I was teaching philosophy at Gonzaga. Uh, you can go to the next slide. I think. And. Um, so when I started this job, um, basically what I've been doing, um, in addition to experimenting with other kinds of programs, I've been spending a lot of time talking to different community members because I take my role as a public servant really seriously. And I want to make sure that my programs are responsive to the needs and interests of people in the community. So, um, I spent a lot of time just chatting with people in the community, trying to figure out, um, what their concerns are, what their perspectives are. And it's also great with the new people who might potentially do a program here. Uh, you can go to the next slide. So what I'm going to do now is just explain a few of the programs that I've put on since I started. My very first program, we called it When Freedom of Expression Is Not Missed, a conversation with Kimber Glidden. If you remember, she was the outlet director of the Boundary County Library. She was just getting a lot of pushback from her community, you know, people showing that at her board meetings and making noise. Plus, and she just. She she left, so I invited her to come. And we had like exchange on the stage and just walk through what what is this thing like for? And that was really well attended, so that was good. You can go to the next slide. Um, we had an event that we called Getting Real About Homelessness in Spokane. I don't know how closely you followed the issue, but several of the local bodies, um, they're actually just winding down this ninety day due diligence project. But they they sometimes call it the Houston model because Houston has had a lot of success. It involved making it essentially a regional model. Um, what was kind of cool about this is you have Chris Patterson, who's sort of with this business group, I think largely kind of seen on the political right. Gavin Cooley, who was our uh city CFO for a long time, kind of seen as a centrist. And Ben Stucker is Ben Stucker, but they all agreed on this uh plan. And so it was really cool to have them up there saying like, you know, if you're looking at the other side, you're like, wait, is this a liberal thing? It's like, no, all three of them are fully on board on this plan. So it was them kind of explaining what that was, um, kind of what Houston did and how Spokane might be able to benefit from following a similar model. Uh, you can go to the next slide. Um, this, we had a a large handful of local journalists come in. Um, Range Media, if you follow them, kind of kicked it off. But then we had several different journalists from different organizations. So there was a short presentation, but then the really cool part was, um, people got to file their own public records requests in real time with, um, like consulting with other journalists and could ask them questions. So that's Emery Dimon, there's Emma Epperali, I had a picture with Nate Sanford, so that was really cool. Uh, you can go to the next one. Uh, here we had several representatives of some of the local tribes, um, not like members of the tribe themselves. So these were, these are like the science geeks that work for the tribes, but they were essentially talking about, um, what they, what that process was, um, returning salmon to the Spokane River. And then I personally, the more exciting thing was talking about the prospects of can this actually work? Was that just a symbolic thing or like, do we have reason to expect that we will have salmon back in our waters? The short answer is we still don't know. So that's that's kind of what they're studying, but it was really cool to hear them uh talk about that. You can go to the next one. Uh, this was maybe my, the event I was most interested in. Uh, through my colleague, Sharma Shields, I found a professor who I think is probably the only person who could have given this presentation. He's a professor in the School of Design at Eastern, but then he has spent his entire sabbatical learning the technical aspects of um, uh, intelligent or artificial intelligence. And so he he was able to speak both to like, what is this technology? What is it? What is it going to do? But as well as like really creative applications of having that design background. Uh, so that was really super fun. Okay, you can go to the next one. Uh, this was, I think, my most recent one. So Yvonne Swan is a lifelong American Indian activist. Um, earlier in her life, she became entangled with the criminal justice system and wound up having a case that took a lot of interesting terms, but wound up setting some precedent in what in the way our Washington State Supreme Court treats, um, particularly American Indian women. Uh, and then she's just kind of spent her life, uh, the rest of her life advocating for people like that. We had Professor Margot Hill, who they already had a relationship. Um, she does a lot with missing an American indigenous woman. And so she was kind of interviewing her and it was a really, um, special time. Uh, okay. One thing I've been thinking about, if you can't tell, these all feel kind of like one off programs, which I mean, that's sort of the nature of the job because it's front affairs. But, um, I've also been thinking about, can I, can I do any regular programs? And so the things I'm thinking about that right now, um, I've already started Spokane Civics Salon, so that's a monthly group to talk about what are the rights and responsibilities of living in a democracy, how do we all get along together? Um. Uh, we've also started Coffee with the Commissioner, so that's just an open space we do every month where, um, a human rights commissioner will just come and be in the space and then you can come and talk to them about things that they're noticing in the community to connect them to various issues they're noticing. Um. We haven't done this yet. This is happening next week. I'm super excited about it. We're calling it Riverside Chats. Um, I sometimes have a fantasy that I'm like a famous podcast interviewer. So this is my uh chance to have conversations with interesting people. So just kind of want to highlight and spotlight interesting people in the community. The first one is going to be with Denise New Year. Uh, she's the young adult librarian, um, in the Community Library Network in northern Idaho. Uh, she just won the Lemonade Snicket Prize, which is a prize Lemonade Snicket gives out himself towards, um, to librarians facing adversity. She's been hosting Rainbow Club for queer, um, youth in her area. And she's definitely, if you couldn't predict, she's gotten various, uh, adversity for that. So, uh, we're going to have her in and have kind of like a live interview with her. Uh, and then finally, actually, no, maybe two things. I'll this I'll leave it here. Uh, we're going to do consult with a philosopher, so it's not exactly current affairs lined up. A little bit more talk about current affairs, they certainly can, but it's kind of taking advantage of my philosophy background. And basically, if people are struggling to find meaning in their life or facing the negative dilemma that they just need some help thinking through, uh, they can book an hour with me and I will help them do that. So that's kind of current, future stuff. Any questions?
So the consult with a philosopher is one on one?
Yeah, yeah. Could some of the other specialists do one on one things and I was like, I'm going to do that in current area. It kind of like, well, it could be a little. Philosophy maybe.
Can you expand a little bit more on those civics salon? Civics is one of the, everybody talks about, but nobody knows what it is.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, well, you know, Range stands out there. Um, these are super useful if you don't know, but they send out their civics newsletter every week about all the different public meetings. And that is one use, but my sort, so sometimes it can be like political engagement, but it can also be like a topic of conversation. And so I sort of mean it in that sense. Um, and the the word I keep using to describe it is that the rights and responsibilities of, uh, living in a democracy. So, you know, I mean, that can range from like, what do we think the best political system is? Do people have an obligation to hope?
They're usually themed, right?
Yeah, yeah, there are. Yeah. Um. Our next one uh is going to be on a kind of famous political essay called Why Not Socialism? So.
Arguing with you for an hour.
Here you want to have summer reading overview, Skylar Lell. I'm like right in the camera, aren't I? There we go. I'm excited to talk about another year of summer reading. Summer reading just kicked off June first. It'll run through August thirty first, so I'm going to tell you about some of our developments for this year's summer reading program. We can move on to the next one. Perfect. So there are four main components here. First off, tracking your reading, programming magazines, which you have here in addition to your lilacs local and various forms of outreach. So the first major component is tracking your reading. Every year, when students under the age of eighteen read fifteen hours, they get a free book as a prize. Um, in years past, we use it in software, but this year we launched Beanstack. Thank you to the friends in the library for sponsoring Beanstack. Um, has anybody been familiar with Beanstack yet? Do you like it? I do. Okay. So what's really great about Beanstack is that it's a little bit more engaging than some of our other services in the past. You can add friends on Beanstack. It's kind of like a social media platform per se, but you can also do book reviews. There are badges and even more programs. And what's really awesome about Beanstack is that it's not limited to summer. You can be on it year round. So you can track your reading on your rep. It's kind of similar to other really popular book track acts, which I won't name for licensing, just in case. Um, the statistics so far on Beanstack are listed here. I looked them up today. We have about four hundred and nine readers so far in Beanstack participating in summer reading. I expect this number to go up now that school has ended as of today. Um, thirty nine completions, so that means thirty nine people have potentially come in and claimed their prize books already. They're only twenty days into summer reading, so that's pretty impressive to read fifteen hours so far. And in addition to this, um, over a hundred and eighteen thousand minutes have been read only for summer reading. That's not even for everybody who's for Beanstack so far. Programming. So we just started programming recently. Some of the highlights include Build a Bug, Dungeons and Dragons, and Touch a Truck events, which usually attract so many families. Other programs for the summer include Nerf Wars for teens, escape rooms for teens. We have a variety of programs about like bugs, art, uh, Fashion Day at the library will be at the end of the summer. Um, and then if you remember last year's summer reading, you were kind of exiting the pandemic era, so we didn't have that many programs. We had three major series of programs posted at each library, but that was probably only about fifteen minutes total. I didn't count up how many events we have this year, but it's easily over twenty. Um. So that is programming. Magazines are a big part of summer reading. You have the Teen Scene and the Spokane Somersault Magazine for kids. Uh, this year, we actually ordered more magazines than we did last year. We ordered fifteen thousand kids magazines and seventy five hundred teen scenes sponsored by the Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation. And they are filled with book recommendations, activities and different library resources, all in a fun, compact magazine that keeps kids engaged throughout the summer, awesome along. Um. The biggest part about these magazines is the outreach that we do for them. This year, we visited, I'm going to go to the next slide. Yeah, so this year, uh, the marketing team hand delivered to thirty different schools. Um, that was easily more than half of what we actually ordered, so probably I want to say I'd have to do the math and that's not my best subject. Um, but, um, it's a lot of magazines, so many boxes. Um, in addition to that, adult services I'm really thankful for because they delivered magazines to roughly ten or more local businesses. So that's like aunties, West Central Community Center, uh, the Native Project and many, many more. Um, in addition to this, there have been eleven school tours in the libraries. Each of these classrooms received magazines upon their visit. And then lastly, you can see Kathy here, she tabled at three different elementary schools. So at this one, she tabled at Cooper Elementary. In addition to this, we have done, um, Sophie, our outreach specialist, has delivered to Dakers as well. So outreach is probably one of the biggest components of letting people know about summer reading in addition to all of our online activity, but these are kind of the overarching highlights. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
What's the age range you're trying to reach?
Um, so we have, well, okay, summer reading is open for everybody. I have an adult challenge and I have a youth challenge, which kind of encompasses kids from zero to eighteen and then eighteen plus for adults. Anyone of any age can participate. But to get the free book, you have to be, uh.
I see you're in high school or whatever. Trying to get to Gary.
Great. As somebody who tried to be a voracious reader when I was a very, very wee lad, be able to have something like this available was really pretty cool, so.
We're really excited to host things like this and I think the kids really enjoy it too, especially the programming. But we also want to instill a love of reading in youths of all ages and adults, if possible. So summer reading is a great way to do that.
Yeah, again, just kudos. The Beanstack is way better than last year because I can just register my whole family. Whereas last year I had to have three different accounts, one for me, one for my kid. Now we're all together.
Cher's designed the previous system.
It's different.
It's different. And does that really like that I could do that?
Beanstack is a lot better. It's got a much better mobile interface.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you for the way that you guys format everything to be able to like look at an event and then just add that event into my calendar and then both the details are there. My brain has to do nothing in that.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we, um, I really like Beanstack. I was a big advocate for it. We just launched it midday, so to see this much engagement so far is going to be incredible. Um, in addition to that, I think like it's very similar to Goodreads. But, um, and that you can look at your friends and see what everybody's reading. It creates more of a community. In addition to that, there's like a community reading goal. So, um, right now I have a one million minute goal listed on the homepage that everybody contributes to. Um, so it's just fun to kind of get everyone's stage and participating together.
We have a one million minutes party in the dome.
Yes, with chickens.
The list.
Why don't you promote, uh, the rollout of these?
So it was kind of a soft launch at first because I didn't want people to get too confused with summer reading, which is the, a huge component of it. But Beanstack, since it's a year long service, like I currently have a pride challenge running. There's a staff challenge for summer reading as well, a thousand books for kindergarten. I tried to promote those first before mentioning summer reading so that people didn't get them too confused. Um, it's mostly been online right now, but there are a ton of ads in the magazines and lilacs local. Um, and I'm going to do another promotion now that school is out as well to get more engagement.
And the way you launched it was really smart because you you like launch it for a an event, but then once you're on there, you're like, oh, I see that it, I can have this forever, for always.
Yeah, yeah, all year long, which is super awesome. And they also have like pre, they have challenges preloaded in there, so if there's something that's happening, I can just say create this challenge and it's just up without too much work on our own. No questions? Thank you.
All right. Hearing none, was, uh, is there anybody signed up for public comment?
No.
Are we still monitoring that email address? Check that. Get any public comments, address them. Um, all right, our next regular meeting, speaking of, will be Tuesday, uh, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at the Hive. And there will be no executive session today, so. All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.